At this time, we will have an invocation. Okay, let me close out the, uh, the, uh...
Work session.
Exec- work session. Executive session. I would like to motion to close out the executive session.
Motion to close out the executive session.
Second, probably move the second in discussion. All those in favor? That has instruction.
Mayor William Bill Edwards here. Mayor of South Fulton, Mark Baker, present. Councilmember Gaster Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Carmelita Gumm.
Present.
Councilmember Elise Willis. Councilmember Naima Gilliard. Councilmember Rosie Jackson.
Here.
And Councilmember Lee.
Present.
So mayor, you have a call.
At this time, we will have a invocation by chaplain, followed by the bed of lead. If we all can stand, please. Just before our invocation, we just married to the council. We want to remember the Henderson family, Aquila Henderson, and they prepared for celebration of her father-in-law. Shayla Reed for the loss of her father. And then on today, we had a fatality with a deputy, uh, Fulton County Sheriff Department Deputy Christopher Phillips. We need just bow for a moment of silence. We recognize that it could have been us, but it's not. And yet, there are things on our heart. So from where all of our strength come from, strengthen us. Where all of our help come from, help us. But you brought us tonight, oh God, because it is the city night for our city council meeting. Do what you've always done. Continue to bless our mayor and our council, city manager, all of our department heads. The entire work of this city, and most of all, all that are present. So let everything that be said and everything that be done remind us that we're always striving to give the citizens of South Fulton the best in class. Let us all say, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may proceed.
Mr. Clerk. Mister Mayor, members of the council.
Before we go, before we go down, I did want to, if it's the village of the council, uh, move the three masks, three, uh, attorney's report, the city manager's report. Uh, and the, I think the CFO report up to the, uh, cabinet general. We get ready to get to that point. You carry on. Yes.
I'll move with you.
Well, you are, we can handle that during the time we have the regular agenda. You want to refer in. Okay, we'll wait a minute.
Do you want to make a motion to me?
No.
No.
Go ahead.
At this time, the consent agenda is for your consideration. There are several items listed on the consent agenda, including meeting minutes, a proclamation, uh, resolution, or a request for approval of the city manager entered into agreement with management advisory group international, forming the class and comp stay. On page two, letter F and letter G, you have T-SLOSS project, as well as, um, Georgia Tech Research Corporation to conduct a B redesign feasibility study for this apartment.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to remove the regular class study from the consent agenda. To put on the regular agenda.
One second.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, you got that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to remove the request for approval, authorize the city manager for B police and redesign study to the regular agenda.
I say again. Captain, Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Probably move the second, move the two items. Any discussion? All of those in favor? That passes, sir. That, that.
So now you need a motion to, uh, draw a [inaudible].
How many motions goes out today's consent agenda?
Second.
Probably move the second in discussion. Ms. Brown.
Yes, um, as it relates to the resolution authorizing, um, the management L-CI, I'd like to table that to the next meeting. Remove from the agenda.
Yes, sir. That's for the regular meeting, and right now, you still consider.
Still only consent. Okay. All right. Probably move the second. All of those in favor? Mr. Clerk, that passes.
Okay, so now you're on the regular meeting agenda, and I probably understood what councilmember Rouse just said. She liked to, um, postpone the San Town LCI application to the next meeting. And then the mayor requested for the staff reports to happen at the top of the agenda. Those are the city attorney's report, the city manager's report, and the CFO's report.
Mister Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I still have a question regarding the LCI twenty thousand dollars allocation amendment of budget. I still have a question regarding that. So when we get to that, I know she wants to remove it. Is that okay? Is it okay for me to ask a question?
She removes it.
Not just.
If it's removed, then you can't have a session on it.
All right. All right. I would like to motion. How many motions to remove the agenda? The regular meeting is over.
Second.
Probably move the second. Any discussion? All of those in favor? That passes.
Okay, that takes you to proclamations and recognitions. You have two items. The first item is sponsored by councilmember Gumm, a proclamation recognizing Tracy Roll and A.I.M.D. LLC.
Good evening, everyone. I felt it was very important to recognize our own city of South Fulton resident, um, Miss Tracy Roll, who does a lot of things in our community, um, especially with the outreach. So I am awarding her with a proclamation today, and I will give you a little bit of information about it. Tracy L. Roll, a City of South Fulton resident, is the founder of AIM LLC, inspiring our youth corps, and TR Insurance and Financial Services. Whereas, Miss Roll is a serial entrepreneur, author, speaker, and community advocate that wholeheartedly believes in second chances. In the book titled In Charge, A Guide to Managing a Result-Driven Life After Incarceration. Whereas, Miss Roll is passionate about helping numerous individuals to transition back into their communities successfully. Working for municipalities for six years, it was from her desire to assist others that prompted her to develop alternative intervention, excuse me, intervention methods and education LLC, AIM. Providing individuals a second chance to make a difference. Whereas, AIM LLC is her diamond as it provides intervention, counseling, and job preparedness to previously incarcerated individuals. AIM LLC is committed to giving back to community service by having participants complete service hours through volunteering. And whereas AIM LLC is a proud supporter and partner for Bring Out the Dolls Atlanta with councilwoman Carmelita Gumm, raising over five hundred dolls to give back to deserving children during the holidays in South Fulton. Miss Roll pays it forward with every opportunity, but insists that AIM LLC is her most prideful accomplishment. Her favorite quote is be a part of the change you want to see, and we know that at South Fulton. Now therefore be resolved, the mayor and council do hereby proclaim February the twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, as Tracy Roll and AIM LLC Appreciation Day in the City of South Fulton, Georgia. All that would like to say, we were talking about your organization, and thank you for it, South Fulton.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gumm. I almost said Congress. Am I speaking as existence? Um, I want to thank City of South Fulton. I am a product of City of South Fulton, and this is my team. I always like, I brought my team today. I have a few people missing, I guess they're late, I don't know if they're coming. But without them, we're not able to do anything. When people ask me, what do I do? Because I, I walk around a lot, people don't know what I do. I say, we help people realize their potential. We're working with work, with works in progress. So that's what we do at AIM. We work in the fenders, and they are given to us by municipalities to provide a change. And I would say, Miss Wilson, we provide changes every day. Miss Wilson makes sure my clients are in compliance, and Miss Tina is one of my facilitators and also one of my PR reps. And we don't have my courthouse in Rowan, I don't know if she's on her way. But every day, we're out here trying to make our community safer for you guys all over the city. This year, partnering with Miss Gumm, it was our second year doing Bring Out the Dolls. As part of our program, it is required that you do community service, and we live by example. We do several projects all over the state of Atlanta, oh, state of Georgia, but Bring Out the Dolls is probably one of my newest and most passionate. And I thank Miss Gumm for partnering with me, because this year, we not only did a giveaway before Christmas, we actually received toy donations after. And there was an apartment complex, Polo Apartment Complex, that caught a fire the week before Christmas. We were made aware of it after the new year. So the toys that we acquired, we were able to take over a hundred and fifty toys to deserving children at the Polo Apartment Complex that had not had a Christmas, because their Christmas was disrupted. So you guys came, you showed out, you look forward to it every year, and we want to thank you for being a part of the change that you wish to see.
Okay.
One, two, three. One more. Actually, two more. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
I would like, uh, Camp Creek, Mister Adams, from Camp Creek Middle School. So again, in South Fulton, we must begin to tell our story of how our schools, our academic achievements of our schools. And I have three schools in District Three that are doing well and that are making strides academically. And I'm going to highlight those achievements. I'm going to tell the whole world about those achievements, and I will encourage my colleagues to do the same about the schools in their districts. We must change our narrative, because the media is not going to change the narrative for us. And so, I want to highlight, and I want to, uh, give a proclamation to Camp Creek Middle School for that academic achievement. Whereas, Camp Creek Middle School is a Title I school located in South Fulton Landing Community of Fulton County Schools. Whereas, Camp Creek Middle School consists of six hundred and ninety-one sixth through eighth grade students, of which ninety-eight percent are African-American. Whereas, during the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year, Camp Creek Middle School overall student achievement increased by twelve point five percent in English Language Arts and almost ten percent in math. Whereas, Camp Creek Middle School was recognized by the State of Georgia as a beating-the-odds school by having a higher CCRPI than similar schools serving comparable students in Georgia. And whereas, Camp Creek Middle School was recognized this year by having the highest increase of students scoring proficient or higher on the milestones assessment. Now, there it being resolved, the mayor and the city council of the City of South Fulton congratulate Camp Creek Middle School for their achievements on the CCRPI and to hereby proclaim Tuesday, February twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, as Camp Creek Middle School Appreciation Day in the City of South Fulton, Georgia.
All right. Uh, good evening, everyone. I do want to thank you for so much, uh, Councilman Willis, Mayor Camwood, the council. Bill Edwards. And all day, I was saying, I'm not going to say Commissioner Bill Edwards. And that's how I met Commissioner Bill Edwards, um, in Westlake. But, um, I want to talk a little bit. Camp Creek, it, it, it has been a journey and a joy at the same time. Um, I came to Camp Creek Middle School and Westlake High School, and in Westlake, we took the school along a journey as well. Westlake has always been this phenomenal brand, but it wasn't able to serve every child. And so what I mean by that, Westlake can do an outstanding job with an outstanding child. But how do you service that child that may be in the middle, or that child that may be a little less motivated? Uh, so we put a staff together over four years that was able to reach kids from all walks of life. Um, that opportunity and that journey afforded me this chance at, at Camp Creek Middle School to continue on that same work. And Camp Creek was a failing school for a number of years. I know most of you all know that in the South, most of the middle schools are failing. And I was on my way out of Fulton County, back to the Cal County, um, to Tucker High School. And I was at a board meeting, a Linda Bryan community meeting, and a parent stood up. She had tears in her eyes, and she said, I'm terrified. I don't have a viable option for middle school in South Fulton. And that just, it did something to me. You know, just, I know, my wife and I, we purchased a home based strictly on the school system. And everything around our daughter's life has been around picking the right school. And for this mother, who was putting everything in her child, not to say she had a viable option. She trusts the elementary, she trusts Westlake, but she didn't trust anything in the middle. Uh, so when this opportunity presented itself at Camp Creek, it was a no-brainer for me. Like, I love South Fulton, I understand the community, and I wanted to be a part of this, because when I first met then Commissioner Bill Edwards, I took over the athletic department in Westlake, we were over two hundred thousand dollars in debt. The girls' track team had just won a back-to-back state championship. We didn't have money to buy anything. And guess who came in, in the middle of the night, didn't want a fanfare, didn't want a proclamation, and bought the rings for those girls? And that told me something about this man and what's going to transpire in the City of South Fulton. It's about service and doing for people, not for fanfare, but doing it because it needs to be done, it's the right thing to be done. And he, he didn't stop there. He continued. He helped me paint the stadium. So one of our parents reached out to him, next thing I know, nose was delivering paint, and we painted the stadium. Uh, but he never wanted credit for anything. Didn't want it to be announced. And that taught me, this, this City of South Fulton is going to be about service leadership, servant leadership. Councilman Willis, who I met, same thing, when I took over Camp Creek, first thing she said, hey, we got to go in Hickory Park. We have to service this community. What is your plan? And I was like, my plan? I don't even know where Hickory Park is. And she explained the need, what resources do, do we need? And she stepped up and brought everything in the building. Um, and so I was just el- I'm elated to be part of this. Uh, one of the things I talk to Councilman Willis about all the time, we're going to pull that grade, we went from years of F to a D, it's a high D. If everything goes as planned, we should be a high seat next year, the following year a B. That's going to, this whole City of South Fulton to me means self-determination.
Hey.
If we fix our schools, we fix our community. The property value goes up, the crime rate naturally goes down. And I, I'm not standing for applause, because I'm standing next to them. I believe in the people around me, because I seen what they did when it wasn't, wasn't for show. I seen, I seen them show their true hand, and I'm just appreciative to be a part of this. Uh, my mom is here. I mean, she's deserving, she's always been deserving. And what's, what's funny is, is my in-laws are here, who are like my second set of parents, I just been blessed. We have a great relationship. My wife is here, but my in-laws aren't. But they're also my pastor and first lady. And my, my pastor teaches all about servant leadership. So this has been a full circle. If you live in the area, come by Camp Creek any day, anytime. We have an open door policy. Take a tour. People ask all the time, what do you need? I don't need computers. I only need two things. Committed mentorship. Expose kids to ideas that they may not be exposed to. I don't care if it's one, once a week, once a month, or once a year. What, whatever you can commit to with membership, uh, mentorship and awards. The narrative that we have to change in our schools is achievement is okay, but even if you can't achieve the greatest achievement, being a good person is even better. So if your family has a person that has passed or a person that's still alive, and your family would like to give an award, say, hey, Camp Creek Middle School, this is for the kid that does, and you give the criteria. It could be a trophy, it could be a plaque, it could be a certificate, and we're giving it for our kids to have something to work for. Every kid would not make straight A's. Every kid would not make straight A's. But those are the things that we need from the community. That encourages our kids. Uh, and very, last thing I want to say, you're going to hear every time I talk, if you ever seen, the vision of Camp Creek Middle School goes back to that parent that was speaking at that meeting. Is we want to be the best middle school option, period. Not best black, not best south side. Whenever parents look at a middle school, when they leave Camp Creek, whether they send their child or not, we're going to be the best option that they have. And thank you all so much.
Well, I want to say, we're making good at Westlake. But, uh, I'm so proud of you, you know, you, uh, I'm glad you didn't leave. That's important. It's important us as a city, and it's important our children who live here that you're dedicated to. So you're well-deserved, congratulations. And I know that Camp Creek is going to move up that ladder.
Uh, to AIM.
And I'm looking forward to it. All right. Thank you.
The way they go through Seaborn Lee, and they go through Camp Creek. So we are part of Westlake's success as well.
Go first, okay. One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay, here we go. One, two, and three. Two more. One, two, and three. One. Two. And three. Thank you.
Are we done? Yes, yes, we are, we are done. We are done. Colleagues, I just like to take a moment, personal goodness that I could, uh, and I think I want to stand to say this. No, I'm fine. You know, I got some good and bad news. Good news is that we have had the best city clerk in the world. She said the region, I'm going to say the world. Of course, you know Mark is going to be leaving us. Uh, he'll be leaving the first of next month. But I want to say, and I share my colleagues and say what they want to say, but I just want to tell you that the day I called you, I was looking for a clerk. I didn't know it was going to be you. But I'm so glad that you answered the call and said, yes, I'll come over to the City of South Fulton. I knew I was in hot cotton then. Because, because Mark is not only a clerk, Mark is an instructor of clerks. As he just got back from having a class, what was it? In Jekyll Island, where he taught clerks. So that's good and bad news for us, but sir, and he's not even gone yet, he'd be the first. He's, he's assistant in helping us to find the clerk, recommend somebody to us that was, was not going to never be another you. But only you know what to look for in a clerk, and I thank you so much for even helping us with that process. So I would just like to give Mark a round of applause. He'll be going to Savannah, Georgia. And, uh, when I come to Savannah, I'll be looking for you.
I'd just like to say, um, you have been the calm in the storm as we've gone through this transition process. You served with excellence.
You are true.
You may be missed. Thank you for your service, and good luck too.
Mark?
I think Councilwoman Rouse kind of summed it up. We kind of grew up together, um, and you are that calm and peace that we need, and it's going to be really different without you. So guys, be enjoy, and hopefully you'll stay in touch.
In the words of voice, the men, it's so hard to say goodbye. But I'm not going to really say goodbye, because Savannah is my hometown, so I go home and visit my family, so you're a part of my family now. And I'll be, when I call you, it's my mom, and dad, and brothers and sisters. You'll be one of the ones that I'll be visiting as well. And, um, I just want to say thank you, because it takes a special person to take the time to get to know each and every individual and every individual personality, and then know how to deal with each and every, every individual personality. And, um, and I appreciate that, um, you accepted us for us, and you've always been professional, and sometimes we sit in your, your office and just unload and rant and rave, and you're always that listener here. So I'm going to, um, I'm really going to miss you.
Mark?
I've already told you that, um, I still haven't accepted the fact that you're, that you're leaving. And, and, and a lot of it is because of what everyone has said thus far. But I've never, ever met anyone so calm in the midst of sometimes, within your madness. And to have the type of personality where you're always helpful, no matter what. Um, and then when the holidays come, there's always that little thought, no matter what it is, um, that lets us know that you really, really care, that you're really looking out for us. But the larger thing is that you're really looking out for the city, that you love the city, and that, um, and I'm just assuming that you know that you've served us well, and it's time to go on to your next journey, whatever that might be. And, um, I'm just having difficulty letting go. But anyway, I wish you well. And when I come to Savannah, um, I'm gonna look you up and hope to see you. God bless you. Thank you, girl.
Now, you know I'm not pleased, I've already expressed that to you. But you have, um, been the calm in my storm. And you know I've had my storms since I've been here. And, um, I just wanna thank you for the peace that you have brought to me. I have sat in your office and talked to you and you have talked to me calmly. I've been here on this, uh, die, die van and you have said, go back. So I just wanna thank you. Cause I know I'm not an easy person. But you've been able to.
Oh, shit.
But you've been able to work with me and I appreciate you, I really do. Uh, and if there's anything that I can do for you, uh, please reach out. And I'm, I'm there. Okay?
Mr. Massey, please don't change your number. We all recall, man. Um, we're coming up on our two-year anniversary. Uh, we've made hundreds of decisions as a council. You serve are the best decision we've ever made. Thank you.
Again, it's always difficult to, to follow all of these great people who speak about Mark Massey. But Mark being our clerk, um, taught me a lot, taught me a lot of roles. And I really appreciate you for that. Uh, the biggest lesson in professionalism is essential at all times. And he demonstrates that every day throughout his walk. And this is difficult, man. You know, this great man of Cap Almasa Fraternity Incorporated. Who, who, who strives for achievement in every field, the human endeavor moving on to Savannah. Uh, just gives me another place to visit regularly. Thanks so much for all that you've done. Thank you for everything that you've shared with me. And, uh, as Colleen said, please don't change your number, because, uh, I'm gonna do it anyway. Thanks so much.
Listen, uh, can't lose a friend, brother. In conclusion, you know, one other thing I can thank you for is that you didn't wanna leave here without recommending someone and going through that process. And I really, really appreciate you for willing to, wanting to actually do that and to help out. Because, once again, no one like you, but you've been around enough people and around enough clerks around this state, around this country, to know what to look for. And so we appreciate all of your support in finding that person that we can, uh, either, either just look at her or decide what we're gonna do and know that it was, that she, that it came from one of the best clerks in America. So thank you so much.
You wanna say something?
Uh, the only thing I wanna say is thank you for this opportunity.
Let's go for these top, these tissues we're covering. Okay, uh, next item is the clerk.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have the public comment section of today's agenda. And we have five speakers. So with all five speakers, would please approach the center aisle at this time. It's Juliet Rankin, Ms. Lwanda Parker, Ms. Jane Shaky, Mr. Penyon Lockhart, and then Ms. Barbara McPhee. Ms. Rankin's your first. Ms. Rankin?
Uh, District Four. Uh, what I wanted to come and talk about was the, uh, Fulton County, well, several things. One is the Fulton County, uh, IGA for the T-SLOSS. And I just wanted to say, I don't feel like we're being treated equally. You guys spoke about that the last time we were here. And, um, when I voted for cityhood, I also voted for the, uh, T-SLOSS, which was the tax for getting our roads paved and the list that they sent out. But the other cities knew we were a city. So I don't understand how this IGA with Fulton County got put into place where Fulton County gets the money and it's different from the other cities. So I'm asking for equality and to be treated the same as the other cities. So for them to say they can't do the agreement when they already knew we were gonna be a city, why not write it if you want the money to go to Fulton County before we transition? Maybe we weren't ready to receive the money. Why not write it saying, once we transition, we got the same monies, the same treatment, the same status as the other cities in the region for the T-SLOSS? And Attorney Walker, for you to say that it was easier just to go with Fulton County because we're already going through them. I know you work for these other cities also, but I don't expect you to say it's easier. I don't expect you to take the easy way out. I expect you to fight for the city of South Fulton. And I know it's hard for you because you work for these other cities also. But South Fulton has to stop taking a backseat to these other cities. We want equal treatment. We don't wanna be the last one. We came in last, but we don't wanna be treated like we are last. And so I know you have to make an agreement because we need our roads paved. And, and Fulton County already had the T-SLOSS coming in. But it doesn't, uh, look well for our equality with the other cities. And if we keep going this way, we're gonna keep getting treated worse and poorly by the other cities. Also, we need to get out of giving cities courts, municipal courts. And they told you to get out and we need to make plans for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker, Ms. Shaky.
Ms. Parker with Inspiring Body Works, District Five. On the right track. Imagine young men in South Fulton County showing respect, building their self-esteem and building character. On the right track. Imagine young men leading their peers in the right direction, serving in our communities and being role models. We're with Inspiring Body Works, a nonprofit organization. Our mission is to cultivate strong, healthy and well-valued children who can overcome negative peer pressure and the challenges that life presents. Our vision is to transform our communities by transforming families first. Today, we present to you our dynamic summer and after-school program. On the Right Track. Who needs our program? Male students who show signs of disrespect, unruliness and/or committing minor fractions, minor infractions of the law. We also have our inspiring parent component to engage and support parents. It is very critical to seize every opportunity to reach the loss and to teach the family. On the Right Track is needed to help develop more productive citizens of South Fulton communities. We look forward to giving our more information after the meeting. And I would like to give a special thank you to Lynette Camora for inviting us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Followed by Ms. Shaky, Mr. Penyon Lockhart, Chairman's Barbara McPhee.
Hello, I'm Jane Shaky. I live in District Four. Thank you, uh, Mayor Williams and Councilwoman Kellyard for letting me come today and all of the other Councilmen and women. I'm here today on behalf of my family and my three-year-old granddaughter, my community, and as a medical professional concerned about the welfare of the children and the vulnerable ci- citizens that live surrounding the illegal dump on Bishop Road that's now spewing toxic chemicals into our air for the past six months. I live approximately 5,000 feet from this dump. And we can smell the fire clearly nearly every day. We have received the first piece of good news with caution, cautious optimism. The EDP plans to use state funds to distinguish this health hazard. The key word, however, being plans. I appreciate the plan of action laid out by the EDP, especially considering that the criminal dump operator has already had his bail revoked for failure to comply. I ask that you all handle this ma- matter with the level of urgency that it demands. Every day that this toxic fire continues to burn, our children and our grandchildren are exposed to carcinogens. One is phosphine, which is a poisonous gas. It was the main chemi- poisonous chemical used in World War I and was the cause, the majority of the deaths of the soldiers. The other one is, is benzene. There is formaldehyde, ethyl benzene, and acrylon. We can no longer be patient. Please understand that the residents of this community are committed to bringing more and more attention to this issue every day until the fire is a hundred percent extinguished. I love my community and I see its potential. Please don't let this toxic dump deter people from choosing South Fulton as a place to live, work, and visit. Thank you very much.
Good evening to the mayor and city council and city manager. My name is Penyon Lockhart. I live in District Seven. I currently serve as president of the Chippewa Forest Subdivision Homeowners Association. Actually, our HOA spans District Six and Seven. And I wanna start by, uh, giving you a great commendation for the, uh, Click Fix App. Uh, it's great. It actually works. And I've dealt with that before, but what's great about this one is that it works and you respond. I have, uh, used it on several occasions and the excellent implementation of it has been really great. And, uh, the resolution, uh, from the city has been very prompt. And, uh, of course, many cases have been closed out and we get updates on that as well. So I want to just, uh, give you a little of, uh, thanks and kudos for that application and for actually following it up. That's what really makes it work. The second thing I wanna just mention has to do with the, uh, sanitation issues and all. I wanna know what is the path for, uh, addressing non-compliance for the pickup? I know that February first was the day where we would, uh, have all homeowners actually having approved a pickup. And of course, that's not happening. And I just wanna know what is the, uh, ongoing resolution to address those type of issues? I believe that it will go a long ways in terms of, uh, eliminating the dumping in the right way, that sort of thing. So if we can get this a hundred percent compliance, I think that, uh, the whole notion of homeownership and trash pickup kinda goes together. And if we can address that, I think we'll have, uh, a great path for moving right ahead. Thank you so very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm coming to say thank you today, um, to Mayor Edwards in the capacity when he was Commissioner Edwards. Today, my family and I voted on whether we would be staying in the city of South Fulton. We own a house in Alpha Reta and my husband wanted to move there and I didn't want to. I reminded him of the things that was good about South Fulton. For instance, on January fourth this year, we had four incidents at my house. We had to call the emergency, the ambulatory services, three times. They were there, there in ten minutes. When we dialed 911, they were there. The school system is getting better. So these are the kind of things that I reminded my family about, uh, why I wanted to stay in South Fulton. Another reason I wanted to stay in South Fulton, because I believe in South Fulton and I've worked very hard in this neighborhood and I want to stay here. And I do want to thank the police department because they're there when we call them within five or 10 minutes. So I'm giving shout-outs today to our ambulatory services, our, um, paramedics and our police department. Especially, um, Captain Toose. She's always there in our community services. And Councilwoman Cleed, you're there too when I call you. And I appreciate that because we do quite a bit in this community. Ms. Joyce sends her thank you. Because we are getting ready for other things that we will need your help in. And we just wanna tell you all thank you. City manager, I know you will, city clerk, you will enjoy Savannah. And I hope to see you there. Thank you.
The last speaker, actually, um, John McMillan, but this past Saturday, I was able, well, I wouldn't say able, I witnessed the accident on Butler Road in an outage. And, um, I made a phone call, dialed 911. Police were there in six minutes, the ambulance was there in six minutes. I think, and fire truck was there in six minutes. So kudos to our department as we're continuing to grow in our public safety. But I did wanna recognize how wonderful you were, um, responding to that accident. Thank you.
Mr. Park, I'm gonna give, give another minute. And then, uh, you wanna say something for a minute? Huh? Go ahead.
So I just wanna, um, take a minute and, uh, to let, um, my constituent who came up and talked about the landfill. Um, I woke up in the middle of the night, now I'm four miles away. I woke up and had asthma. I woke up in the middle of the night and I was just coughing and I could smell something burning. It was awful. And up to the time I came to this meeting, I had a mask. So I really, really understand and I'm just hoping that they will move the belongings quickly if they say this.
Another minute, Mr.?
Yes, sir, I'll give you a second. Uh, to the people in District Seven, especially the, uh, Mr. Sharad Lockhart. I'll be in touch with you guys with the code. Uh, I'm spoken with our hall, our service providers in our district. And they're gonna give us, uh, a very, uh, heavy discount as long as we use it collectively. So hopefully I can come out the Chippewa Forest and speak to us, well, as on the ridge. But I'll be providing that code, uh, as early as next month for that. And then maybe it would probably enlighten a lot of people to become compliant.
Mr. Park?
Make that one.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that concludes public comment. It takes you to the city attorney's report along with city manager and city inspector, as you requested, for the adoption today's agenda, although I have moved up.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing additional.
So Mayor and council, uh, asked the mayor for, uh, this to move up the, uh, city manager's report because I think we've got a lot of quality information. I think today's date is, uh, just an important one for us with our clerk transitioning, uh, us kinda making some breakthroughs on the transition from Bishop Road. And just personally, uh, this is the official meeting before my one-year anniversary of the day that, uh, I was both nominated and confirmed with you guys. And so the reason why I think that that is a great point to do something a little bit different from where in the, uh, city manager's report, we normally just highlight a couple of things and then we have a written document that we post publicly. Uh, Ms. Rankin's, uh, during a public comment the last time, made an excellent point that sometimes we have to tell the good news of the city. And this one-year mark, I think is an excellent point to be able to do that. And I, I have to admit, and the reason I'm calling Ms. Rankin's out personally is because I did not do that duty at the last council meeting. I was a little bit frustrated with the lack of progress we had made on Bishop Road. I think, uh, some of my own shortcomings, but during this, being your city manager and not getting certain things done, I was a little bit frustrated. And so I had to sit with a couple of different council members, my mama, uh, my father, and a lot of other people who influenced me to really highlight the great work that has taken place in this city. So I wanna take a minute to just kind of take us through the process so that we can all see the extraordinary work that you guys have been leading, uh, over the last year. And the honor and privilege it's been to kinda work with you to accomplish that. So last year in February, uh, I think it was your six months without a city manager. Uh, there, uh, were a few challenges in us identifying the police chief prior to transitioning police. Uh, we had, uh, we were approaching the transition of both the municipal courts and fire. Uh, had no idea how we were going to measure the success of the city. And there was a lot of concern about whether the city would actually transition accordingly. And there was a lot of concern about whether the city would actually transition accordingly. And there were actually, I think, only two department heads that were in place at that time. I know that I had an interest in transition here because we ended up having a public Skype interview that I don't think any of us were fully prepared for. And for me, it was extremely challenging because I'm not certain my bosses in DC knew that it was going to be public like that. And I was nominated and confirmed without a contract, performance measures, or clear strategic vision. But over the last year, I think another thing that people don't realize when they look at the job of the city and the council is that you are actually responsible for delivering the services of every other city in this region that is at least in this region about 100 years old. And so you have to deliver those same services. At the same time, you put the entire city in place, brick by brick, step by step. And so that often gets lost sometimes. And so when I was talking to my father, he reminded me of something I told my mayor in the District of Columbia is that, you know, we always voice our displeasure. And we should because that's how people know that they have to improve and they have to get the job done. But we would be remiss if we did not also voice our pleasure because there's a lot of work that keeps happening. And as people start to make decisions and focus and improve, if you don't highlight the good things that are happening, you will only believe that you're in a moment or an opportunity or place of despair when I will tell you the city of South Fulton is not. So in this 11 months since we have been partners, we have not only corrected a variety of issues, we have actually coordinated activities that no other city in the state of Georgia has. So we're the only city in the state of Georgia that not only conducts a mayor's walk in every district focused on business and economic development, we issue a report and statistics, and we are solving problems that are identified at a 95% clip. Outside of Calhoun and another county, we are the only city that has a 24/7 customer response center that can be accessed both online and via telephone. And so, mind you, we're not in our second year yet and we just finished transition. We are also the only municipality that successfully passed every ballot referendum that was put before us by 62.5% clip at minimum. Beyond that, we passed a balanced budget that increased revenues by 55% while eliminating our debt. We've established new communication tools that are second to none and we have increased our communication efforts by 400% since that time. We passed personnel policy and procedures that were not in existence. We've transitioned all city department heads and we have done so ahead of all publicly stated deadlines without fail or no service delivery interruptions. We have launched innovative pilots that cost the city nothing, including the South Fulton Fellows internship program that started in our municipal courts and is now spread to three other departments, including communications. Since illegal dumping was identified as an issue, not only did we transition public works at a savings of $1.2 million, we now have a camera pilot program that is in the beta phase and we've launched the South Fulton Green Team, which will help people who have, who are trying to divert their, any criminal activities to be able to help us clean up the city. In addition to that, we've added a new South Fulton 101 education platform that will ensure that all of our residents know everything that's happening in the city. We've also brought in $25,000 in additional funding that has come from Georgia Power, Southern Company, Coca-Cola, our partners on Fulton Industrial at Miller Zell, and others. We've launched a citywide newsletter, a new website, and we've launched the annexation website to put our stake in the ground on how we're going to support our partners at Lot Lomond as well as Fulton Industrial. In addition to that, we retain the qualified local government status. And what that does is it means for the first time, those who were once in the SSD and are now city of South Fulton residents have a say-so in their comprehensive plan and the city strategic plan so that they can have the type of land use in their communities that they've longed for for over two decades. We've also increased permitting revenue via contract modification so that the city's revenues have increased to add to that 55%. And we're exceeding those permitting revenues budgeted from FY18 and FY19. We're also delivering efficient government because we were 100% compliant on the GHCIC alcohol audit with no findings or observations despite only having our police department in place for three months at that time. Our courts now have implemented a diversion program and are successfully implementing a restorative justice model that is the envy of everyone in the southeast. When it comes to economic development, despite only having one dedicated employee at this time, we branded and let everybody know that South Fulton is your destination for business. We've introduced TAB legislation locally and have our state legislators at our side pushing it forward during today's general assembly. We've also hosted a job fair, which I will tell you, our counterparts at the city of Atlanta or Fulton County have not done on behalf of our partners on Fulton Industrial that was only open to our 200 residents that attended with 30 businesses that we will be reporting some very good outcomes at our next council meeting. We've established a development authority, given the city control over our development future. We've also increased business licenses by 75% during that year's time. We decreased the permitting timeline by 25% during that time. We delivered a balanced budget within statutory guidelines one day earlier than the stated deadline. And we've increased those revenues, as I've said, by 55%. Reduced fire response times to 6 minutes and 29 seconds, lower than it was when they were in the county. We've also successfully advocated for the first time ever to get a new EMS provider. And since then, we have reduced those response times by 50%. We've implemented multiple mutual aid agreements showing our partnerships across the region. We've increased our fleet and fire and we've expanded the smoke detector installation program. Further, we've started to add some innovations that people weren't expecting and that they also don't always see. We've increased the total number of employees from day one by 2,460%. In addition to that, we partnered with GMA to start a leadership training program to make sure that every one of our department heads and senior managers have the ability to lead appropriately and manage this government efficiently. We've launched the South Fulton Fellows internship program, as I talked about. And we've established key financial partnerships in Parks and Rec, including the Hawks that we'll be announcing, has given us approximately $3,000 to help with some of our summer programs. In addition, Parks has also increased their revenues through the implementation of Civic Rec. And we're seeing more revenues than the county saw when under their leadership. We've also added to our public safety array with two mini precincts, with another precinct coming on O'National to really stabilize our operations within the city. And we've increased the total number of sworn personnel by 40%, which is a really big deal that nobody's talking about because we got hit over the head for months about not having enough police. And that problem, no one's talking about anymore. But we have done an excellent job there, which has resulted in crime being down 5% than when it was with the county. And so even with transportation, while there was a big to-do about that transition, we've reduced costs by $1.2 million. At the same time, we've increased transportation KPIs in every category and added a few innovative pilots related to the implementation of our services. So we are by no means perfect. I won't even go through the last page of these accomplishments. But I will say, in this year that we've been together, I am extremely excited about working under your leadership and the great things that we have done so far. And really honored to have the opportunity to move forward in year two to take our city to the next level. And that concludes my report.
I'd like to see you guys. Councilwoman Wood.
Thank you for your update. Speaking of us coming up on our two-year anniversary, we were supposed to get some type of summary of what we're planning on doing for to commemorate the two-year anniversary and the state of the city. And I know that majority of my colleagues would like to have a city of South Fulton, some type of videography highlighted out for our strategic priorities.
Yes, and so that memo will actually come to you by closing today. Tomorrow, I was hinted at today that I would send it a little bit too many. So I broke up probably about six or seven until tomorrow. But just briefly, on the anniversary date of the city, the goal would be to combine the two. That would also give us enough time to procure and produce the video and the other activities that support the state of the city in the one-year anniversary.
Okay. Thank you so much. Mr. Malazi?
So on the 26th of February, we'll be discussing about different citywide expenses that were not included in our 2019 budget. And those expenses are critical, important, that they cannot wait for the next fiscal year. So we'll be discussing during a work session on the 26th. You'll be getting details and recommendations about on how to go forward with those expenses.
Okay. And that takes you to the resolution section of today's agenda. I just got a document. Should I assume that this replaces what's on?
It has a couple of changes.
Okay.
What do we do?
There is a resolution 2019, that is 008. I believe this is a substitute version of that resolution that was in your printed package. A resolution of the city of South Fulton establishing a city environmental committee encouraging environmental protection and for other lawful purposes. This is co-sponsored by Councilmember Gil Yard and Guss.
Everyone, this resolution is important for a lot of different reasons. Particularly, it says we do have some serious environmental issues in District 4, but other districts have environmental issues as well. And so we want to be a city that addresses them, that deals with them on the front end so that we don't have to scramble in the end and try to deal with it. So just to give you a little bit of information about what the resolution says, it says to ensure smart, sustainable, environmental initiatives related to economic development and the long-term financial viability of the city. To the environmental-related initiatives are necessary to strengthen environmental justice policies and programs to meet the needs in low-income areas and for areas of minority concentration. There's an awful lot of research on environmental justice. To advance environmental sustainability by using best practices to promote social equity and encourage quality economic development. And lastly, desires to encourage citizen participation in environmental education programs, planning, project approval, and regulation enforcement processes by empowering the public and information and encouraging community activism on environmental issues. So one of the, I talked to some of my colleagues and one of the changes that was made on the second page on the composition and appointment was to make the committee like other committees that the council appoints. And here originally was for council that wasn't on the committee to make the appointment. But it was changed for all council to have the ability to appoint citizens to the committee. This will be the first committee that will be composed of council members and citizens. That way, the citizens have a voice and are involved in the process. And then the second thing is that we have not gotten to the point where we can establish an environmental program. For instance, Fulton County has an environmental justice program. So it's going to take time for us to get to that point. And in the meantime, the citizens that we would like to have on this committee would be citizens that would have education and experience in environmental science. Because there's an awful lot, the person that spoke earlier talked about chemicals and what they do. And so the science is extremely important. Public health is extremely important. So is environmental justice, environmental education. And so those are the changes that we're making. And that is my conclusion.
Okay, we have Councilwoman Wood.
We don't have a motion on the floor, but I think, thank you for putting this together. I think this is much needed and it's going to, we are going to set the example of how other cities should operate when it comes to the environmental concern. But we did not, I don't see the changes on this.
Page two, number three.
Yeah, I'm looking at page two number, we don't have the changes. This still says that at least four, it does not say that every council member will have an appointee.
It says all of whom shall be appointed by city council. That's what that means.
But it just says four, so you still want to just leave four residents on it?
Yeah, so it's going to be four residents and all of the council will get an opportunity to appoint someone.
So I would like to make an amendment for each council member to.
Seven?
Yes, for every district. So every district's concern can be represented on here. And the other thing I would like to make a recommendation that we change, the mayor pro temp or the council may serve. And so according to our charter, the mayor pro temp is solid unless the mayor is absent or incapacitated. So I would like for that to say, the mayor or, or the mayor and mayor pro temp. So in case if the mayor is not available or if he decides to recommend the mayor pro temp to serve, may serve at his discretion as an ex-official member of the environmental committee whenever less than three of the city council members serving are present at a meeting.
So the reason why that is there is because, so you have the, you have the council. I mean, we have the committee and the committee is, let's say, it's composed of three council people and now seven residents. So if one of the council people is not available, that's the only time the mayor pro temp would be available to replace one of the council people.
Well, so should it say council person? I mean, I'm not understanding.
It says the mayor pro temp of the council may serve at his discretion as an ex-official member of the environmental committee whenever, whenever less than three of the city council members serving are present at a meeting.
The charter, section 3.30, says mayor pro tempura due to the absence of physical or mental disability of the mayor for any cause, the mayor and tempura of the city council and such persons' absence or disability for any reason. And so we're giving the mayor pro temp more powers than what the charter says it should have. And I think that that's usurping the mayor's authority. And we should put, we should follow what the charter says. And I think that we should put the mayor or mayor pro temp. And if the mayor pro temp is not available, then, I mean, if the mayor's not available, then of course, out of absence, we should have the mayor pro temp there.
I'll call the previous question.
Oh, but we can both.
We haven't made a motion yet. There's no previous.
I make a motion. I make a motion to accept this resolution with the change from four councils, from four residents to seven residents.
Second.
I can move this up and discuss it?
Yeah, well, we have to go on this and I'm going to make another motion.
Discussion, but I didn't, I didn't make a motion. Go ahead. I just, that, that, just a point of order with our matter of attorney. I think Councilwoman Wood's brought up an interesting point. I know that the mayor pro temp serves in any instance that the mayor is incapacitated. That is the only real mention of the mayor pro temp's powers. But does that mean that the mayor pro temp is limited? But does that mean that the mayor pro temp is limited to just that sentence? Um, because it, it does seem that, you know, uh, my previous LS and I had done some study around, uh, committees and, and committee structure. We looked at Georgia's ten largest cities. And many of them have committee structures very similar to what Councilwoman Gilliard has outlined, where there's a mix of council people and, uh, citizens on those committees. And that, that in, in some instances, uh, making comes to mind, the mayor and the mayor pro temp work together to assign people to committees. So this is just really a, a process question. In the, does the charter specifically speak to how we must create committees? Is there, is there, does it say that all, all, all committees that we make must follow this structure? Because we have sort of followed this every council person gets a person sort of thing. And I, and I don't know, I think this is a great opportunity for us to, to, to change the dynamic, mix council people and, and staff, and, and council people and citizens, and just have a different structure. So I'm just wondering, what does the charter say about how we must form committees?
So your. Your charter has two basic components or two basic provisions for committee selection. The first is the council's ability collectively by form to establish a committee. And then the committee, if you establish it in that manner, operates the way you tell it to regulate. I mean, the way you tell it to operate. The second manner that a committee can be created is by the mayor. Now, he can, um, unilaterally create a committee, but that is a council, a city council committee. So he can create if the mayor said that I want to investigate administratively how human resources is operating, then he would be able to designate, um, a certain number of you to investigate and report back. But it would still be subject to your confirmation. It's just that the initial process and the manner that it moves would be recommended by the mayor. So in this case, you were, um, not acting under a city council committee the mayor created, but you're acting as a committee that's collectively created by the council. And I think the Councilwoman Willis's concern is that, um, the mayor pro temp is listed here versus the mayor. And it, it sounds like she thinks that it may be more appropriate to have the mayor serve as a stand-in. Now, whether you have him serve as a stand-in, um, that's your discretion. You do have the charter section that she referenced, um, charter section three thirty that says that in the mayor's absence, the mayor pro temp is delegated with all the authorities the mayor holds with, with certain limitations. Um, but as far as the council designating who's going to be the stand-in, you have the authority to make the person who is the stand-in be, you can say that District Two would be the stand-in, District Four, the mayor pro temp. So you have your discretion as to determine who the stand-in is. Um, I just think Councilwoman Willis is saying in her opinion, she thinks it's more appropriate to have the mayor, um, fulfill that role.
Right. And then to the, to the point of, of, well, I'll just say, I'll yield to whatever the pleasure of the council is. But I think that, um, that, that a little too often we get into this like my district, my district, my district, and not one person. Like we all have to have a person on every committee. And this might be a wonderful opportunity for the seven of us to have to agree on four people. Like, it might just be a wonderful thing to practice. Uh, because we are going to have to all vote for, uh, members of our development board. We're not all going to just give to pick someone and throw them under. So, uh, before we take on something big, maybe we could be faithful over this small thing before we take on, put the table on a big thing.
Councilwoman Rouse?
Also, the charter, section four point eleven speaks to on page twenty-five. Every member of any appointed board, commission, or authority of the city shall be appointed by a majority vote of the city council for such terms and such manners as shall be provided by ordinance. But it specifically says unless otherwise provided by ordinance or law, which this is one. Each board, commission, or authority shall consist of eight members with one member being nominated by each member of the city council and the mayor. Unless otherwise provided by ordinance or law, there shall be no requirement that a board, commission, or authority member resides in the district of the council member who nominates the member, but all members shall be residents of the city of South Fulton. And so I think, um, the effort and the attempt to get to a certain level of expertise makes sense because it's an environmental committee. But, um, I think that should, I think we should try to stick as close, even though this provides for, um, for every appointment. But again, focus on expertise that should be on the board.
Let me say this. This is a classic example of a possible piece of good legislation that gets bogged down with a bunch of mess. And, uh, I think is that when the motion is made, promotion is made, we have an opportunity to vote up or down, we have, she has an opportunity to amend that motion. And whatever discretion of this board, then that's what we would, uh, we would go by. Uh, you have made your position, Madam Attorney. Uh, that is your position, that, that she's within the rights to do what she's doing, and that's what the board so chooses. Am I correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, so we were at the, at the point of, there was a motion on the floor and a second. Am I correct, Mr. Clerk? Yes, sir. Okay, and we, so we're in discussion.
Yeah, we have two amendments we need to make. Okay, we voted on that.
We already voted on the seventh.
Okay.
We did, I agreed to the seventh.
Mr. Clerk, what do we vote?
We're yet to vote. We just have a motion.
We just have a motion on the floor, we're yet to vote.
Can we vote with that before, before we leave? I think we need to practice that a little bit.
Okay.
I'm confused because we didn't vote on the seventh.
She said we did.
The clerk said we did.
Oh, she just agreed to the amendment.
Okay.
So the amendments, the way amendments work, is she don't have to agree to them. We, anybody can make an amendment and then we vote.
Okay, do you want to make an amendment?
Okay, we gotta vote on the amendment. I, I move that we, I move that we.
We're gonna vote, Mr. Parliamentarian, on the amendment on the floor. What is that?
A motion made by council member Gilliard, seconded by council member Gomes, to accept or approve the resolution with one change from four to seven residents to be nominated for each city council member.
Let's vote.
Are we using that?
I ain't using that thing.
Let's vote. You can, you can raise your hand if you want to.
I mean, if he's gonna be leaving too soon.
Okay, but right now, let's raise your hand. The first, how many?
It should be eight, not seven. Everybody has.
All right, let's, well, raise your hands, I'll tell you what the vote is. We're raising our hands so we can see the vote. One, two, three, four, five. Abstentions are, uh, Willis and, uh, Rouse.
And, yeah, these aren't abstentions, these are no votes.
Yeah, these are no votes.
I'm sorry. No votes. Okay, we're three no votes.
Okay.
That passed.
The third.
I need to make an amendment. We gotta vote. I, uh, move that we, um, each council person and mayor have an appointment to the, uh, environmental, um, committee. Seven is only eight. Yeah, we need eight. For each person and mayor to have a appointment to the board of environmental committee.
Ma, uh, Madam, Madam Attorney, that's a substitute motion, right?
So what was the vote on the first?
We moved it up from four to seven and it passed four to three.
So you would be, who these were then, to amend the, to amend the previous motion from seven to eight. So therefore, every person on council will get an appointment to the, uh, environmental committee.
Is there a second? The property move is second and discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand.
Yes.
Eight instead of seven. One, two, three, four, five, I get. Four, I guess. Five. That's five. Abstentions are, uh, Ms. Gilliard and, uh, Jessica Lee. No votes. I'm standing, keep standing.
Actually, if I could clarify, I was just told that, uh, Councilwoman Willis was not one of the person two who voted in favor of the motion prior.
Oh, she was not on the very first.
Yeah, she was on the rail side, which would prevent her from asking you guys to reconsider that vote.
But I didn't ask for reconsider. I asked for an amendment to what was voted on. I didn't ask for.
But the amendment is, so let me clarify, is the amendment for something additional or is it change?
Change.
Well, this is a change and it's treated as you're asking to reconsider what they approved.
Okay, that's not what you were trying to, so that's why I asked for the amendment.
Yeah, I apologize. I thought that you were in the majority and I was just told that, that you were not in the majority vote.
Okay.
So.
All right. Next, Mr. Clerk?
No, I got another amendment.
Done. Not on this.
Yes, if we.
We actually haven't passed the motion.
We have not passed.
We haven't created a court. We've just, we've been, we've been voting about the numbers of members. We have.
I move, I move that we change the mayor pro temp language to mayor in the committee. So it should say mayor or mayor pro temp in the absence of the law. Where it says the mayor pro temp of the council may serve at the discretion as an ex-official member of the environmental committee whenever less than three of the city council members serving are present at a meeting. I move that we change that to the mayor or mayor pro temp of the council may serve.
Is there a second? Hearing none, that fails.
No, it was a second. She was raising her hand.
All right, the property move is second. Uh, discussion. All those in favor? That fails. Passed. All right, Mr. Clerk?
So you've made one amendment that's passed now. And that was the first motion that, uh, changed the membership from four to seven, so I guess you want to take a motion to.
We have, we got a motion and a second, yes.
Not for the adoption of the resolution as amended.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
To adopt resolution as amended. Second. Property move is second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? All in. All those in favor?
What was our discretion?
I said discussion. Okay, let me do this. What is your discretion?
Discussion online sixty-six, specifically terms and removal. I have a question specific to the city council may remove any environmental committee member at any time with or without calls. Can you please clarify why that's in there?
Well, sometimes someone may be serving who may not be the best fit for the city. And if you do with calls, the standards are just a lot, a lot higher. So if, if the person is not the best fit, you don't want to tell them, look, this is the reason why we don't want you there. Then the council can collectively say, we've just decided that the relationship isn't working, we're gonna part ways.
So again, I'm, I'm real curious, because this is the city council, this is an independent committee with appointments. Why wouldn't a committee bring, bring in a recommendation back? As opposed to just the way this reads, I, I just have concerns because now we're not on the board, we just changed the composition to appointees. And now the city council, why wouldn't their activity, even if it was a recommendation to remove, come from the committee itself?
Well, the committee can recommend that you remove someone, but this resolution just wouldn't give it the authority to do that. So the council would have to make the ultimate decision whether you remove anyone from the, the committees and the halls.
And this is, and this is pretty customary to the city.
Yeah, most, most decisions to remove someone are made by the, the city council.
Okay, uh, Mr. Matt, Mr. uh, my name is.
Is there a piece of it?
Yes.
And what is our piece by the record?
There will be some expense. There will be some expenses incurred as the each and every, um, council approved vote, the assignment. And again, in this, uh, quality, there will be a need or demand on Earth Day. They have to run for the Earth Day, which has not yet been discussed.
Why is there a lot of money we talk?
Because we don't have what is expensive or what's expensive or what expenses it will be, what they will be doing, we don't have like.
So Mr. Clerk, you can just ask the question.
If you went through the process?
Yeah, yeah, and then. You can just ask the question. It's what it's gonna cost. I've been asked all night. What's it gonna cost us? Uh, he can't insist. He can't tell me. But he knows that there is a cost associated with this, uh, legislation.
In the legislation, it says that we would have birthday. But we might not necessarily have birthday this year or next year. It might depend on the funds. So right now, he doesn't know how much it would or would not cost. But it says in there that we could have birthday, but that's what that would be a cost.
So I think the, the, the main cost for this committee would be by case basis because they cannot move for anything, anything they do is gonna be a recommendation. So essentially, if they want to make.
I'm just saying that if there is a cost that you, that the committee would, would, uh, raise the money for.
We can put requirements in here for the committee to raise money.
He says the fifth, that's the fifth associated. He said that they're gonna have a birthday.
No, 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 I didn't say it's gonna. I said it's.
We may, we may have Earth Day. So what I'm saying is if, if you're gonna have something, uh, Mr. Gilliard, maybe the committee could raise the money. Yeah, instead of getting that fifth out your way.
There's a lot of stuff after Earth Day.
So I just think maybe change the language.
Yeah, we can amend it to include that the committee encouraged to present to the council matters in which, um, fundraising may assist the, the efforts, may assist their efforts.
I hate to say it, but this ain't ready.
Yes, it is.
Okay, we'll vote, but.
And I mean, and I got it from other cities. So other cities have, have had the same thing, and it says that we can have an Earth Day program. Earth Day programs are all over the country and there are all kinds of resources.
Mr. Gilliard, I was trying to tell you that.
Let me finish, please. So if it's not in the fifth, and it's recognized that it can be something that we can have, then we can find a way to do it. We did it with the seniors.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. We're saying the same.
Exactly with that commitment.
We're saying the same thing. We're saying the same thing. So can we, can we remove, my, when I say we're not ready, because we've, we already talked about this. Man, we talked about this thing twenty minutes already. And, uh, I, I suggested another change that can give you the opportunity to do what you just said.
We can put it in the fifth and let the fifth come back. It's in there. But that's what we can do.
Where is a motion on the floor? I'm gonna carry the motion.
Well, I got, I'm on the list.
All right, you can talk, but there's still a motion on the floor. I'm gonna recognize you. All right?
I don't, I think the confusion is sometimes that stuff is coming up and sometimes we're not doing that.
Go ahead, Ms. Willis.
Um, we made a policy that we weren't gonna pass any resolution or any ordinance without knowing the financial impact. And right now, we don't know the financial impact of this resolution. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Malazie? Now, that was a policy this board created and it, and the resolution passed unanimously. And so if this resolution is saying that coordinating, it didn't say we made, it says coordinate the city's annual celebration of Earth Day. We don't know the financial impact of that. Development proposed environmental-based educational programs. What educational programs? Do we know the financial impact of that? Presenting plans to the city on showing sustainable parks, forests, open spaces, water, uh, resource management. Are these appointees gonna serve at no cost? I mean, are we going to, uh, pay them for serving on this commission?
So, fifth is to show and see if in this fiscal year there's money that has been assigned for that expenditure to this end expenditure. You will see there is also one word that was called enforcement, uh, how to. You will see there is also one work that was called enforcement, uh, how do we draw with code enforcement, how do we enforce it? It depends on the how you are going to enforce it, are you going to use the resources that are available, are you going to use beyond the resources that have been budgeted? So in this case, is the Earth Day to be implemented in this fiscal year, or it's not, if it's not, then it has not impacted this fiscal year. But you are talking what expenses we're to be with it, other than they will have to pay for stipend, because everybody has got stipend, but beyond the stipend.
Not everybody, excuse me.
Council Appointed Board. So other than that, the rest of it, you don't know when it's going to be implemented, it's saying it will be implemented next year, then move back to this for next fiscal year.
I mean, I, I think that.
I'll give you an example, that's one we, we adopted the implementation of.
I rise to the point of order, I can't hear Mr. Mayor, cause there's chatter going on, and he's trying to explain something to, I rise to a point of order. Thank you, Mr. Malazi, I'm, I'm listening, can you, I could be here, can you please?
I was giving an example for, there are some registrations that we have passed without the taking into account of this.
Just may I rise to a point of order, I still can't hear Mr. Malazi, cause there's chatter going on.
Let's give, alright, let's see, let's really try to teach you.
Thank you, Mr. Malazi, please.
One of those ones would be development authority. We passed, but it would depend where are you going to implement it, we will need about fifty thousand dollars to have that. You passed it without having money putting aside, but again, it depends where are you going to implement it, if you are going to implement it now, then we will need to allocate that money. If you are going to delay it until maybe, until five months, then that's different, so there are some registrations regardless of the policies there. It has been some, uh, it has been also that it has gone ahead to implement those without allocating funds. I'll give you an example for government authority.
Thank you.
Next person is, uh, Ms. Guns.
Actually, we think that we're really creating a mountain out of a little, um, we have been debating this resolution probably for the past thirty minutes, and you see the audience is even giving up the vote now, it's almost embarrassing. The only thing, we've already voted on certain amendments, maybe we need to have the city attorney add in this resolution that the members are not going to be compensated, but they will also raise the funds for any type of Earth Day. I'll make the amendment for that.
Any type of Earth Day or any type of expense?
And they will not be compensated, I move that we have the members that are appointed to this, uh, environmental committee, that they will be responsible for raising funds for Earth Day.
I'm sorry, point of order, we're actually in discussion for a motion that we're in the midst of.
Oh, well, she's making an amendment, she has.
Uh, Madam Republican, Jerry.
Oh, help us, she's making.
Hold it, the, the easiest route would just be to withdraw the motion and have the.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Hold it, withdraw the motion, then reconsider, and then have your motion be the place to do motion.
The motion to approve this, can you?
Who's, who knows?
I'd like to withdraw the motion.
That was, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Baker's second by Councilman Kelly to adopt a resolution as amended.
We went to discussion, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we have not voted on that, that's what we need to vote on first. Well, he just.
But he, he withdrew, so she.
Oh, he withdrew?
Yeah, so she can make her.
So now I'm calling it now, it's your turn.
Okay, go ahead, make yours.
I admit, I am making a motion, what is it, I move that we have all committee members that are appointed to this board, that they will be responsible for raising funds and for other activities for Earth Day, uh, and then also, they will not be compensated on this board.
Second.
I promptly moved the second, we're in discussion. Do you still have, Ms. Gilliard, can you?
I'm finally. So let me ask a question, so the, uh, the first, the first one that we voted on, that was this one, for now, that's back out there with the amendment to it, okay?
Okay, Ms. Kelly, did Ms. Gilliard cool up? Okay, Ms. Gilliard, can you? Alright, uh, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Good work, good work.
But what is that up there?
Mr. Clark? Okay. Mr. Clark?
Okay, I was verifying with the city attorney that it would be her pleasure that you now adopt this resolution as previously amended, and I will remind you of the two amendments. The two amendments was changing from four to seven residents on the membership, and then the last motion that you just made and approved was not paying the members any compensation and giving them the opportunity to raise money for Earth Day and other activities.
Which we, who voted up?
Yes.
Passed both amendments, now you can adopt that resolution.
I learned to make this, make a motion to adopt the resolution as previously amended.
I second, promptly moved the second in discussion, hearing none, vote please. That passed. I brought this move, lady, can I go to the next item then?
Yes, please. Okay, the next item, you have actually three, possibly four remaining action items, you have on page two, action item nine eight, a request for the South Fulton delegation to consider the city of South Fulton's request for eight percent hotel motel tax.
I'll entertain a motion, oh, I'm sorry, we moved to resolutions from the agenda, are we skipping?
The res, are, would they not be in the resolution section, or where are they?
Just following this one item.
He's got, he has, okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So I move that we approve South Fulton, this is a resolution that I actually sponsored, and, um, yes, there's, there's no such thing as a fifth, because we're actually.
Just make a motion.
Uh, we're actually, I was explaining, we're actually, um, given, we're asking the South Fulton delegation to consider proposing legislation at the general assembly to consider to allow us to collect at a rate of five percent, we're currently collecting at a rate of, uh, at me, at a rate of eight percent, we're currently collecting at a rate of five, so I move that we approve South Fulton delegation to consider the eight percent hotel motel tax.
Second.
Promptly moved the second in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? That's good. Okay, Mr. Clark?
As Mr. Councilman Kelly just requested, there are two items that you removed from today's consent agenda, these also are action items. First item on page one, under letter four E, request approval authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement between the city of South Fulton and Management Advisory Group International, M A G, to perform the class and compensation study not to exceed fifty thousand dollars under agreement number two thousand nineteen dash zero zero three.
Mr. Manager.
This serves of this request, uh, the council, uh, during our FY nineteen budget development, I think our human resources department, uh, had identified the need, uh, to rightsize a variety of our different, uh, compensation levels which are not in order based on our transition from Fulton County and us kinda just putting things together through transition, we also identified that the council compensation and resources are also out of line, and so this, uh, compensation study will address the full, uh, city of South Fulton's compensation provider study and guidance to be able to ensure for FY twenty and beyond, we're able to appropriately, uh, compensate all of those, uh, employees, electeds, and other staff related, uh, to the city of South Fulton.
Okay, Ms. Ralph? Ms. Kelly, were you on there?
Yes, um, it is my understanding that, well, first of all, there wasn't an actual price, there's a, I guess there's a negotiation up to fifty thousand dollars.
Correct, I believe it was budgeted a little bit over that, but I think the, uh, initial, uh, proposal is at about forty thousand, but it did not include certain aspects that would be required, including, uh, the council compensation benefits, et cetera, et cetera. And so we are ensuring that we're able to get it done, uh, within the budgeted amount.
So, um, it is my understanding that we might have some cash flow issues, we're gonna discuss them at the next meeting, there are several initiatives that we have already passed in the October budget that for the last six months have not been funded. So I would ask that we hold this until, uh, the next meeting, until we get an update, I, I'm a little uncomfortable that we keep approving things, but we haven't actually paid for the things that we've already.
Well, council member, I think.
So that's, that's, that's my motion, I'm making a motion that we hold this to the next meeting.
Thank you, in discussion, council member, would you?
Let me, is there a second? I've removed the second, discussion.
Oh.
Go ahead, you want to say something before I?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we highlight when we look at the budget, uh, and all of those things that are proved, you do have a hundred and nine million dollar budget that you approved, but you do not receive all of those funds at one time. I think a part of the administration's responsibility is to assist in prioritizing those activities for the budget you pass, and ensure that those things are delivered throughout the year. Unbudgeted expenses are a little bit different, and so those initiatives, of course, would have to be addressed through the budget modification, so as the council considers whether there is funding available, I would ask that we be allowed to provide that input as well as an explanation. I believe this is something that the council has been very public in making sure is a priority, and there is budgeted funds available, in fact, this is coming in under budget.
Gotcha, uh, Ms. Guns?
What is the actual timeline if this is approved tonight to give?
So I believe it's ready for execution and implementation, so a vendor came out of top, it's, uh, M A G, the same one, I know we gave you a brief summary of it, we would be able to begin executing the agreement, uh, as early as tomorrow, assuming they, uh, continue with the handshake agreement to implement all of the activities as requested within that budget, and so if they do that, there is an agreement that's in place that's going through the procurement process.
And we will have this, uh, in six, four months?
Yeah, I think it's a little more than a quarter, it's about four or five months, I don't have it in, I lost six, I was total of six months, I apologize, yep.
Okay, uh, let me get, she can find a way in, go ahead.
I'm in there, yeah, I'm in there, um, question, you said M A G and you did R F P, um, we've been called Vincent and Beck, you know, everything called Vincent, and when I did some research, they also did this, they do this process, why did you, um, not go through this?
We just went through the procurement process, for all those that, uh, submitted in R F P, that's who we went with, I mean, they came out, uh, the best of about six or seven people, I think, that submitted, so we don't, we just go through the procurement process.
Okay, and in your thing, you said six months, but inside of their contract, they said four months.
I believe so, but remember, the council compensation and other categories may not have been fully expressed in their proposal, so making sure that they're able to incorporate those, I think that's why the timeframe that they said was maximum was six.
Councilwoman Willis?
I know there's a motion on the floor to hold this, I disagree with that motion, I think we need to move forward with this, this is something that the council as a whole, you're correct, Mr. City Manager, has, um, advocated for, um, since we have been a city, if you recall, we have a pay-in-class, uh, compensation that we have adopted that is inclusive of three things that are factored in it, that's the county's archer study, that's the industry standard, and that's comparative to what other cities are doing, now, we're talking about saving money, I feel that this study would help us save money as well, because if we're paying salaries that are too high, this study will come back and tell us that, if we're paying salaries that are not within market rate, this study will come back and tell us that. So this is important for our budget planning process as well, and we should not delay this any further, so I, I disagree with, uh, holding this.
Ms. Gilliard?
The only reason why I agree with holding it is just until we get a hand, and even though I know that this is in the budget too, but some things, even if they aren't in the budget, we might have to put them on hold for a minute until we get, till we get a handle on all the different things that we're asking for, that we say we leave, things that are popping up, that aren't budgeted, that we know that, um, that we're going to have to fund, and then the fact that our cash flow could be a little bit better than what it is, and so, um, I think that the first thing that we need to do, um, the, uh, financial, the chief financial officer treasurer needs to do is to bring to us a list of all of those things that we say that we need that are extra, that are not budgeted, and those things that we might hold for maybe two weeks, I mean, well, city manager, would two weeks hurt it, hurt you?
I would, I mean, I think if, I would call it an emergency, I think it just depends on the timing of decisions that we all want to make, whether it's for the FY twenty budget, whether it is after the general assembly and the council has to make some different decisions. When you look at some of the decisions that you are tasked with making, being armed with the feedback from this study would assist you, but if you believe that holding it is the will of the council, we will follow that process.
But I, I'm just saying, just for a minute, not forever and ever, I just wanna see where we are, and, you know, we talked about a lot of different things, and there's an awful lot out there, and so, um, so that, that's.
Again, I, I believe that we are always going to follow the will of the council, and so based on what your outcome of your vote is, we will adjust accordingly.
Ms. Baker? Ms. Guns?
Ms. Guns? Mrs. City Manager, I think we're, we're less than two years old, but I believe that this is our second time doing a, I guess, a pay-in-class conversation, I thought it was, so what did we do when our former, uh, HR director was here?
I believe you put a pay, I believe you put a pay-in-class plan together, but I don't think it was based on the study, I'm certain it was not, yeah, you haven't had a pay-in-class study.
They did an internal study.
Oh, we did an internal study, okay, alright, well, that, we have to see it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, what's your opinion?
Thank you, um, this was something that we budgeted for in October, and since then, or during that time, I spoke with our HR director, our city manager, and we've since passed the resolution for ordinance actually that I sponsored to make fifteen dollars a minimum wage in our city, and a lot, for this upcoming budget year, a lot of this study will contribute to effectively pulling that off. I think that now that our city manager has brought this in under budget, to wait is just for nothing, I think that this is something that we're gonna do anyway, and at some point, we have to start entering action with ordinance and just do what we need to do, because it has to be done.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Ralph?
I totally agree with Mayor Pro Tem Baker, um, I do think, um, we need to have this information armed as we prepare, uh, for the upcoming budget, um, I know we've, uh, voted on things as recent as the E M T, um, supplemental pay, to make sure we remain in. Um, I know we've, uh, voted on things as recent as the EMT, um, supplemental pay to make sure we remain attractive to our fire personnel, and so I think it's, um, it's really important that we now hold this up as well.
Okay, Mr. Kelly.
Um, I I agree with Councilman Mark, I actually, uh, Councilman Baker, I actually co-sponsored that resolution. Um, a year before that, we found bodies in the park and I asked for lights. Two years now, real park is still dark. Uh, we also in October twen- uh, twenty nineteen budgeted, we budgeted for parks, rangers. Summer is coming, we have no park rangers, we have no date when the park rangers are coming, so we approved this pay-in-class study, and according to Mr. Malazin, we may or may not have any money to actually fund anybody at any of the things that we approved in the study. So I'm just, I I am, I am, so so for example, we do a pay-in-class study, we say we should hire these people at these rates. Right now, we don't have any cash flow to hire anybody, so I don't know why we're in a rush to do a pay-in-class study for things that we don't have. So is that, that's not what you said, do we, do we have money to hire, do we have money to hire park rangers today or by this summer?
Don't forget that park rangers were valued at half as needed, valued at half amount for the, uh, transport aid, and those must be taken care of during the, um, five-year amendments in the end of March.
I rise to the point of order, Mr. Mayor.
The thing that we'll be talking about, the things that I have said that will be talking in a, uh, one of the six, uh, these are unfundied things. Things that we did fund, you have mur- mouths that's.
Mr. Mayor, I rise to the point of order.
We have transportation, street rights, that we validated, but we transferred money, so we don't have those things. And also now we are not paid, so then we have rejection of.
Because there's going to be chief manager, chief manager.
The reason I rise to the point of order because we are voting on whether or not we should approve this pay-in-class study. We should, this is not germane, park rangers is not germane to this.
So so just.
So the motion is, this park rangers, whether or not we have money for park rangers is not germane to this, like, to what we just whispered on the floor. The vote on the floor and discussion was about whether or not we should hold this resolution.
Ms. Malazin continues.
So, everything that I'm bringing here are things that are so needed, but they were not in the budget and budgeted expenses that are needed. Park ranger, council aides, and other things we valued at half, but we need more, and if we were to make those adjustments, can't meet the year. And we will be talking again, we talked last time, I talked and today I mentioned again, we have about thirty million dollars short for in revenues if we don't get our insurance premium tax from Fulton County. That means we need to make some adjustments. So yes, we are, will be in touch for if things don't go as we did.
So so, uh, I just want to be clear, did you say that we do not have enough money to to pay our council aides through the end of twenty nineteen? The council aides who are sitting in this room now, we don't have enough money to pay them?
No, no, no. The time you approved it, the time you approved the budget, they were valued at half time, but you approved them to go to full time, and it was agreed, they still have enough money after the end, the time we're doing budget amendment, they still have enough money. But we have to allocate money into the council aides to make them up to thirtieth of September.
So so I I'll I'll just leave it at this, however the council wants to vote, uh, you know, everyone has the right to vote as they see fit. We have a hundred and nine million dollar budget, but we don't have a hundred and nine million dollars. Yet each each meeting, we continue to pass items, but we don't have money to fund all of the items that we've already passed, and so I'm just tired of it. That's the reason, the reason is because we're getting very, uh, and getting into, uh, financial items, and, uh, it's 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 adding up the vote, vote up if you can.
Do you have a second to the discussion? To properly move the second to move to the previous question, in discussion, all those in favor? Okay.
The previous question is whether or not we should hold this legislation.
All right, so that was just five votes to hold.
No, it wasn't, that was the previous question.
Previous question was to hold the original motion, am I correct? It's probably, yes, to hold, the motion now we vote. All those in favor?
Oh, opposing it?
Opposing it. That doesn't pass. Do we need a motion to move forward then?
Yeah, you, if someone else has an alternative motion. I move that we approve the page, uh, are we approving the negotiation, because I don't have the actual. Okay, I move that we request, I move for authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement between the city of South Fulton and management advisory group international to perform the class and compensation study not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Properly move the second discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? That passes five to one. Uh, Mr. Kelly. It's a noble. Ms. Clerk.
We've got one more item on the top of page two, one more action item, um, under number four, letter G, request approval authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement between the city of South Fulton and Georgia Tech Research Corporation to conduct beet police redesign and feasibility study not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, approved in two thousand nineteen dash zero zero four.
Ms. Manager.
Well, I know that, uh, if you have spoken with Chief Meadows and all heard him speak, he highlights that the beets in the city of South Fulton and our region have not been adjusted since the nineteen fifties. And so we have partnered with Georgia Tech in a, uh, government-to-government agreement to be able to redesign those beets as well as, uh, the potential to, uh, adjust some of the fire, uh, activities related to that study as well. Um, to redesign those beets and connect our public safety, uh, system, and so the purpose of this agreement is to allow us to enter in with, uh, the city, I'm sorry, with Georgia Tech, uh, for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Ms. Fair, I move, I'm moving and then.
Oh, George, congratulations.
You don't have to talk. I'll make a motion. I move that request approval authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement between the city of South Fulton and, well, that's not what's up there.
I'll put it outside.
Thank you, I'm moving.
Mark, did you pass that?
Did you pass, did you, okay, I move the request approval authorizing the city manager. Wait a minute, we have a. I'm, I'm. Is it fifty thousand? I'm moving. Okay, I move that we approve and authorize the city manager to enter into, uh, agreement with Georgia Tech for approval up to fifty thousand dollars for. The, uh, alignment of our police precincts.
Properly move the second, discussion.
So I'm first up.
Yes, you are.
So, uh, this, I was the one that sponsored the resolution for the, uh, police feasibility study, and based on conversation that I've had with the chief and then also improving the effectiveness of our police force, it is necessary for us to update our beats. And this will help with timely responses, um, so if we could spend fifty thousand on this, I think it's well worth it, since it's been since nineteen fifty something. So I'm going to ask that we not fully debate this, and I'm asking for your support to move this forward.
Okay, Ms. Jackson.
Uh, I'm trying to do it, and my, um, question was just, is, are you trying, is your goal to decrease or increase? Hopefully increase.
Increase.
The beats. But you know we didn't.
She didn't mean to say decrease.
Well, I'm just saying that.
Well, certainly after, uh, Georgia Tech puts forwards the, uh, put forward the research, we anticipate that our beats will probably more than double, uh, as we move forward. And so we would expect, because right now each one of our beats is the size of college park. Uh, we have eight beats, and as you can imagine, that's entirely too big geographically for each beat, because you only have one beat officer per beat. So as we move forward, hopefully they'll be able to identify smaller geographical areas where we'll be able to put, uh, uh, police officers.
So basically, did you try to do that?
Well, whatever the study says, well, eh, you know, and to be perfectly honest, with the great deal of our crime happens along that corridor, so we would expect to have a large footprint around that old National Godbeacon corridor, so we anticipate a bulk of our beats coming along that area. But like I said, the research will have to bear that out.
Okay. Ms. Rose.
Um, I want to thank my colleague, uh, Councilwoman Member Gardens for smarting this resolution. I too agree that we do need to move forward with approving this. Um, actually, uh, I was at Cliftondale Community Club and Chief Meadows said that our beats have not been realized since nineteen seventy-one. So that's actually before I was born, and and so I can imagine, um, you know, we only have, what, how many beats now? And and over a hundred square miles of territory, and, um, every, uh, every beat is as large as college park, he explained, and so, uh, we need to move forward and not continue to debate debate on this. Our safety is at stake.
Okay, do we have a motion, a second? Double discussion, I'm sorry. Uh, all those in favor? Uh, that passes unanimously.
That takes you to your last, uh, discussion item sponsored by Councilmember Jackson, city council appointments to the two thousand nineteen older Americans board.
Mayor, um, this is just, um, establishing, we did this in April of two thousand eighteen, we established this resolution, and, um, May is older Americans month, and I'm just opening it up because everyone was saying that they didn't have an opportunity, you have an opportunity to appoint someone from your district to be a part of the, um.
Do you have comments?
Are you changing this as well?
It's not an action item.
We did, they just need to.
Yeah, she just makes a discussion. Will we just send it to you?
Well, yeah, it's, it's the.
Send it to your office.
Yes, send it to office.
We can send it to Jackson's office, to your point. All right, Ms. Ralph.
Um, I would like to ask the city manager, since we had discussion, that they, the city manager come back with a plan to operationalize all our boards, kind of plan for doing that. Um, I'm I'm glad that you brought this up, and I think you need to look at all the boards we've been with.
Plan to operationalize all the boards.
If I could, um, add on that, I mean, my purpose would be to have everything in an ordinance that way, because it's going to be very complicated. You're in, you're in year two, year twenty, you guys having so many resolutions for these boards, it'd probably be better to just codify and put everything in one place. So if you're willing to do that, that's something I would like to kind of help you organize as well.
Well, I'm I'm asking for a plan about staff, so whatever, whatever it is, I just wanted to bring something back to the council so we know any boards will be asked for staff and and ask for.
So Mayor, I believe that, um, the plan for the council is to go into executive session for personnel. That is actually the one item that we found a solution for the balance of FY nineteen that will take us five minutes to discuss, and our HR manager can come in to to help illuminate that issue, it's very minor.
That'll be good.
I move that we go into executive session for personnel.
Second.
Properly move the second, in discussion.
No longer say security.
Right. Right, okay.
We have asked for that, man.
All right, all those in favor? That passes, let's go. So you, so has something changed?
Yes.
Nothing I'm aware of.
We walked, I mean, you walked out, so we could have finished staying over here. But we're not going to take care of that.
Hold it, right here, hold it, hold up. They properly moved the second, in discussion? Uh, we had, we had act. Yes, action for taking executive session, Mr. Baker, Mr.?
No, sir, no action.
Okay.
You do have the the motion that I'm forwarding.
But we didn't take action right there.
No.
We're doing it out here, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just, okay, I'll just let you know that if you move to do that.
Okay, we took, go action executive session. All those in favor to close the executive session? That passes. Go ahead.
I would like to move that we authorize the major extend the offer of employment to Esdine and White for position of city clerk with the details to be negotiated by the city manager and city attorney.
Second.
Properly move the second in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? I didn't hear a motion.
I move that we adjourn. I move that we adjourn.
Properly move the second, all in favor, I see y'all whenever.
We sorry.
Welcome to South Fulton.